Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It is April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Councilmember Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you. Everybody bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you for your continued blessings on our community. Please be with those all over the world who are in your need right now, Lord, whether it's a war zone, or poverty, or food, or whatever they need. Please be with them. Please be with the people of our community, and please help us make the decisions you want us to make for this community. It's your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into ceremonial items, I thought I wanted to read something. So, one of our councilmembers, Councilmember Maxwell is not here tonight, and I think everyone here would agree it's a good reason why he's not here tonight. So I wanted to read something that Austin sent us, and just said, "I will not be able to attend the city council this evening due to a conflict. Claire and I are awarding the Mitchell Maxwell Scholarship to eleven Rutherford County seniors this evening at six P. M. at the Rutherford County Board of Education meeting. While it's first on the agenda, I expect we'll be done by six fifteen." He just says, "I'm not going to be able to be here," but a little background below. "When our son Mitchell passed away on July fourth, two thousand and thirteen, Claire and I later made the decision to establish a scholarship in his name at Riverdale High School. Mitchell was an invited and preferred walk-on at Mississippi State University in Starkville. His goal was to walk on and play and receive a degree in education so that he could go into teaching or coaching at the high school collegiate level. He caught the teaching and coaching bug in high school, and that was indeed his dream. Our first scholarship was awarded in two thousand and fourteen. It was a simple two thousand dollars that is paid to a student via the high school guidance office for their first semester in college to help with books or incidentals. This year, we decided to expand it and to further ourselves so that all eleven of our high schools, to include Holloway and Central Magnet, would be able to have a recipient on the ten-year anniversary of this effort. Eagleville, Rockville, Riverdale, Blackman, Stewart's Creek, Laverne, Smyrna, Siegel, Oakland, Holloway, and Central Magnet. The criteria are simple, in that they have to be a walking-on to play a sport at a collegiate university, and ideally have a desire to go into teaching or coaching at some level. They are, in a sense, following in the footsteps of our son, who never got the chance to take that step. Joining us tonight at the Rutherford County Board of Education will be Mr. C. J. Johnson, who graduated from Riverdale High School in two thousand and twenty-one and walked on at MTSU as the defensive back on the football team. Mr. Johnson was a recipient of the two thousand and twenty-one award and was recently placed on scholarship by MTSU head coach Derek Mason, who will be joining us this evening. It's nice to see that the scholarship has indeed helped some fine young men and women in the pursuit of their dreams in our community. He says, "I hope you have a great council meeting. Stay safe, and thank you for all you do for our citizens in our community." But I can't think of a better thing than Austin would be missing our council meeting tonight to be able to award those eleven scholarships. And so I also don't think there could be a better fitting time for the young men who are sitting in our audience to hear that story, to be able to present a proclamation to Middle Tennessee Christian School tonight. So, Doc, you can come up, too. So we've got the coach, and we've got the general manager right here, I'm sure. Councilmembers, you know that we've all made a priority this year, really over the last many years, to be able to celebrate not only what happens in our community with academics, but also athletics. And so it's my pleasure tonight. We have the two thousand and twenty-three team of Middle Tennessee Christian who won the Division II A state title. And so we have a proclamation for the entire team tonight. Whereas in the two thousand and twenty-three season, the Middle Tennessee Christian School football team reached an exceptional pinnacle of success by clinching the coveted Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association Division II A State Football Championship. Again, I need to ask also, as I read this, Jason, why don't you come up as well? Then you guys can introduce your team. Jason, I'm sorry. So Jason's the athletic director for MTCS. And I wore my orange coat tonight. It's my UT coat, but I'm wearing it for MTCS tonight, too. So whereas with an impressive display of robust defense and precise offense, the Middle Tennessee Christian Cougars secured victory over Friendship Christian with a score of twenty-eight thirteen at Finley Stadium, located on the grounds of the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga, thereby clinching the school's inaugural state football championship. Whereas attaining state championship necessitates unwavering dedication, tireless effort, and cohesive teamwork, all of which the Cougars demonstrated abundantly throughout their championship campaigns. And whereas it is fitting to recognize and commend the football players of Middle Tennessee Christian School for exemplifying the exceptional caliber of Tennessee's youth. Now therefore, Ashay McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as a day to recognize Middle Tennessee Christian School's football team in Murfreesboro, and urge all citizens to join in this recognition.
I want to thank everybody here for having us here, Mayor McFarland and everybody up there. It's truly an honor. You know, I've been here for three years, my first year as the head coach. You know, moving my family from Florida to Tennessee was a tough decision. And, you know, the community at MTCS has been fantastic. You know, they took us in. I had an eighteen-month-old daughter when we got here, and I'm pretty sure she pretty much runs the place now. But, you know, the kids have been fantastic. It was their goal at the beginning of the year to go out and win the first state title. And, you know, I told them it wasn't going to be easy. It was going to be really hard. And if that was their goal, then let's go do it. And they never wavered. You know, it's not a smooth ride, ever. But, you know, they weathered the storm, they weathered the ups and downs, and just so proud of them, and so excited for them to be able to reach their goal. Thank you again.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, let's have the team stand up who's here. I know everyone couldn't be here tonight. They had thirteen seniors, many who we've seen in this community. I know many of these kids since their earlier days, so want to thank y'all. And last but not least, Dr. Sein here, who is the leader, one of the leaders at MTCS, has served on our golf commission for how many years, Doc?
Sixty.
He had hair back when he served on the golf commission. That's how long it's been. But, you know, I think it's important, and not only for the students, as you hear the story that I read about Austin Maxwell and their son, you know, Murfreesboro is a community. And Dr. Sein's a great example of getting involved in your community, making your community a better place. And I think if you ask your coach, championships are great. But if you ask Austin Maxwell, making good decisions are even better. And so that's what we're here for, to help with that. So congratulations, gentlemen, and hopefully y'all be there again next year. So, Coach, thank you.
Y'all freaked out. Unless y'all want to stay and watch one of the most boring things you probably...
Thanks. You know, we'll move to the consent agenda, but I want to say this. You know, there are so many things that we're blessed to be able to be a part of. And I think Bill will say this from coaching as many years as he's coached. Kurt just made an announcement on social media where his son Ben just signed a college golf scholarship. It is tough being a kid today. And, you know, you look at what Austin and Claire have gone through over the last ten years, and, you know, we may agree on rezonings, we may disagree on rezonings. There's a lot of stuff that we go through that we may agree and disagree on, but the ultimate goal is these kids who are out here who are celebrating a state championship, it's not just to show them that they won something, but it's to make them a better part of this community. And so that sort of puts everything in perspective. So, you know, I want to say to Claire and Austin tonight that I can only imagine what they've gone through for ten years of losing a child. But they have taken that experience and been able to say, "We're going to do something good from it." And I'm very glad that Austin is, I wish he was here tonight, and they weren't having to ever have this situation, but I am glad that he chose to be doing something else tonight, because what he's doing tonight is just about more important than anything that we'll do up here. So, Austin, I'm proud of you. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have seven items. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
Anybody on the comments on the comments?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Mr. Rose, did we have anyone sign up for public comment tonight?
No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. All right, any thing that needs to be taken off the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to land use matters. Ordinance twenty-two OZ forty-eight, rezoning property along Memorial Boulevard, Memorial Boulevard in Haynes Haven Lane. This is second and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
No.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have Resolution twenty-four R-ten, solid waste fee schedule adjustment. Mr. Gore?
Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present this to you tonight. This is a follow-up from our workshop in March. I'm bringing to you a resolution that would formalize the adjustment to a proposed solid waste fee, a monthly fee increase. You can see on the table, the top row is our current fee structure. The row that's highlighted in gray is shown as an FY twenty-five proposed fee. That residential fee would go from nine dollars and fifty cents per month to eleven dollars and fifty cents per month. The outside commercial, or outside the city core overlay commercial fee would go from thirty-five to forty, and the inside city core overlay commercial fee would remain at thirty. This would recover about seventy-two percent of the overall cost of the solid waste expenses currently in the budget. So we would request your approval for this resolution tonight. I'm available for questions if you have any.
If there aren't, I'll move for approval.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to all motion. We have Patterson Park ductwork replacement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Patterson Park ductwork replacement consists of replacing the metal HVAC ductwork with fabric ducting over the walking track and atrium areas. An evaluation by an outside consultant determined that replacement with fabric ductwork would eliminate the moisture control accumulation and related problems that had plagued the system since it was installed in two thousand and two. Project was competitively bid, and Trinity Geothermal LLC was the lowest responsible bidder. The agreement's been reviewed by the city's purchasing and legal teams, and the project cost of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars is funded by the fiscal year twenty-one Patterson Park CIP budget. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So move. Second.
I mean, typically, I don't want to embarrass anybody, but y'all see Darren Gore just fall getting that?
No, they tripped him.
Okay, all right. We have a motion, a second. Please call the fall, I mean, the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, we have General Bragg Trailhead Playground Replacement.
This project consists of replacing both existing playground equipment by Landscape Structures Incorporated and existing plate surface by Forever Lawn Incorporated through Sourcewell Contracts. The existing playground was constructed in two thousand and four and has outlived its useful lifespan. This project provides a safer and more modern playground and is ADA compliant. The agreements have been reviewed by the city's purchasing and legal teams. The project cost of two hundred and seven thousand, forty-five dollars is funded by the fiscal year twenty-one General Bragg Trailhead CIP budget, which includes a reallocation of two hundred and six thousand from the same year Barfield Expansion CIP budget, and the remainder to come from the fiscal year twenty-four operating budget. Happy to answer any questions.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have ceiling renovations at Hobgood Elementary School.
This project consists of replacing the existing ceilings, asbestos abatement of existing water pipes, and installing new suspended ceilings in the original parts of the building. This is a sister project to the one at Mitchell Nielsen Elementary did last summer. Lessons learned from that project were incorporated into this one. Project was competitively bid, and Thrash Construction Services LLC was the lowest responsible bidder. This agreement's been reviewed by the city's purchasing and legal teams, and was approved by the city school board on April ninth. Project cost of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars is funded by county facility bonds. Happy to answer any questions.
I know you said we did that last year to another school. With inflation, did it go up a lot?
Yeah, we did have a couple of change orders, but we hope we fix that with this one to avoid, hopefully won't have any change orders.
No, I wasn't being critical. I just was wondering, with the economy like it is, how much did it go up when we're doing another school? That's all right. I mean, it's good.
Yeah. These two schools were built same era, the same expansion, all that was the same. And nobody'd been into those ceilings, and we had a couple of, they were, I think the adjustment was around twenty-five thousand dollars, but we've incorporated that into this one. Bids came in, the base bid was about twenty-five thousand less than last year's project.
Okay, no other comments. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye, thank you. All right, we'll move to Second Amendment to Old Fork Golf Course Renovation Project Contract. Trey, we haven't seen you in a while, so Mr. Huddleston, I wanted to make sure to know that you've been on the tour recently playing.
Well, I didn't do well, so that's why I'm back. Tonight, well, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, I'm seeking your approval for the Second Amendment to the Old Fork Golf Course Renovation Project Contract. Just kind of an update, currently renovations are ongoing and on track, and we are scheduled to open around the first of September. But this amendment, it will increase the project total by fifty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. The First Amendment was a reduction by about fifteen thousand, but it is fully funded, it's under budget, and it would bring the total cost of the contract, or to this contract for the renovation to one million, four hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and one dollars. There's quite a few items that are included, and they're listed on Exhibit A from Wadsworth Golf Construction Company. But the main highlight here is the driving range T expansion and relocation. This has kind of been one of our most requested items. We've not had a driving range that's big enough for people to hit their woods, hit their drivers. And so this would be something that people have been asking for, and it would also be something that we could generate additional revenue with. Currently, in a normal operating year, that driving range alone generates about seventy-five thousand dollars of revenue. And so with the expansion of the driving range and increased use, we would expect it would pay for itself pretty quickly. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to City Works Software License Annual Renewal.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. IT is requesting the renewal of our enterprise licensing package for City Works. This software is used in multiple departments throughout the city, and the licensing covers both asset management and land management portions of the software. You happy to answer any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have Amendment One to Violent Crime Intervention Fund Grant Contract.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Steve Gerald, Deputy Chief, and it's a pleasure to be back before you again tonight. First, we have your consideration is Amendment One to the Violent Crime Intervention Fund Grant. On May eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-three, council approved this contract. However, the state has recently submitted Amendment One for the purpose of reallocation of some of the funding from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five to allow the department to purchase some of the budgeted purchases. There are no changes to the overall funding or the terms. However, the grant revenue and expenditures for FY twenty-four will decrease by nine hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, but will increase in FY twenty-five for the same amount. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we have contract with Penlink LTD for, excuse me, Penlink Limited for software purchase.
We also have for your consideration is a contract with Penlink Limited for the purchase of PLX Analysis Software. This is a tool used for analyzing, managing, and visualizing communication data, which will allow investigators and our real-time crime center analysts to efficiently organize, interpret large volumes of information, which will aid in investigation, crime solvability, and intelligent gathering. This is a one-year contract price of seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and will be funded by the department's FY twenty-four operating budget. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Deputy Chief. All right, I don't think we have any board and commission appointments. All right, councilmembers, I want to tell you guys, Craig, I think this is okay to say. So we've been going through the process of talking about a solid waste authority, and I wanted to make sure, you know, publicly to talk about what we've discussed. But we thought it may be a good idea, instead of creating an entire new board to deal with a utility, to be able to co-op and use the Murfreesboro Water Resources Board and make that more of a utility board, since they already deal with a utility, and be able to work through the process of having the qualified members we already have on that board to also work through and talk about solid waste at the same time. There's a process that we'll have to go through to set that up. It has to be done completely, Craig, completely separate. But the more we sat and talked about setting up another utility board, it became apparent that we've already got a great board that does that already. So, you know, how can we facilitate that? So what that may end up meaning, you may, we may end up doubling the workload of that board. And talking to Darren, those meetings typically run, and Kurt and Madeline both serve on that board, they typically run forty-five minutes to an hour, very well-run. But we may have to look at what the state statute is on compensation and how that works, so.
Our charter, yeah. It's, the solid waste authority is established through our charter. So when that was passed several months ago now, that discussed how the board is set up, how it's to be compensated and such. So we'll take a look at that and make sure that it all is consistent with the charter.
But there have been some movements on several of the things that we've been working on for the last several years regarding solid waste. So I think, you know, even with the discussion we had last week with, you know, Craig's transition into, there's going to be a lot of work that's going to come across on that solid waste side. So it will be something, I think, as a council over the next months, we'll need to discuss on how that's set up and how we want to do that. It'll be more work for Madeline and Kurt, but no, they can handle that.
Yeah.
All right, any licensing?
No.
All right, no licensing? Any statements to be paid?
No.
Any other business from staff?
Next week, we will not meet, so we'll meet again on May the second, and that'll be a meeting with public comment beforehand.
Okay. Any other business from councilmembers? Jamie, do you have something? You're smiling like you have something.
Nope. Well, is the mayor's prayer breakfast on May second? Is that you or Joe?
That, so the mayor's prayer breakfast is handled by Greenhouse Ministries, and that is all the mayors, so.
You will be there?
I will be there.
Early morning and a late night for us, then. It starts at like six-thirty in the morning.
Mayor, I just wanted to comment on the Housing Authority's opening. It is just remarkable to see how many folks and different people came together to make that come to fruition. And we all know it took a long time to get there, you know, but I still remember when it was just a piece of paper with a drawing on it. And now, to be able to actually see it on the ground, it is changing the whole environment in that area, and it's just such a blessing to be able to see what has happened over there, and all the people that have worked together to make it come to fruition. But they need to be commended, that Housing Authority and their board, and all those people that worked to make this come to fruition. It really is something to see. And I encourage our public to go over there, drive through the neighborhoods. You will feel differently. This, you know, when you think of housing projects and affordable housing, it's redefining that whole definition for, and the neat thing about it is, is now when another community's, and those kind of developments were in that area, Franklin Heights and over on Mercury Boulevard at that time, and then in Oaklands, we did that in the fifties, you know, when those projects were built like that. They're all over our country. And now, to see that we have something on the ground that people can say, "This is what you could have in your community, and this is how you get there." A lot of hands working together can make it work. And anyway, I just, it was a very proud moment for all of us to be there and see that come to fruition.
And John's testimony was beautiful.
Beautiful, beautiful. And that was from one of the residents there. So what Bill's talking about, we had the groundbreaking, or not groundbreaking, we had the ribbon cutting today with the Murfreesboro Housing Authority over at the
Oakland's Park.
Oakland's Park. So many, many years ago, the council started, and I said this when I spoke, many of us that sat up here took a lot of heat whenever we decided that Franklin Heights, that, you know, back in the fifties, when you went into Franklin Heights, you went into Oaklands, even at Mercury now, you know, the term, Bill, you used it with the term was the projects. And so when you walked in those houses, it was a front door, one window looking outside, and that was it. I mean, there was no windows anywhere else in the house. And so this council, you know, I said, Madeline and Bill sat on this, and then Kurt, as people came on, you know, we took a lot of heat when Franklin Heights was torn down, then when Oakland was torn down. And Thomas at the Murfreesboro Housing Authority kept saying, "Trust the process. We know what we're doing. You know, we want to build a community. We don't want to build a dwelling." And so today, if you've not been over behind Oakland's mansion, I mean, I've not been over since it was under construction, but to drive in there today,
It's amazing.
It's not like anything that you would see downtown. And so we talk about affordable housing, and you, there was a Moses Phillips caught me out on the street when I was walking, walking in, and, you know, thirty percent of the income affordability is a big issue in this city. It is really a cool place. So, you know, all the staff at this city and the council who really, we were all here when we voted on the planned development on what that was going to look like. It was a, it really is a game changer for that area.
And to thank the generational changes, not just what's the people that are living there now, but for generations. but for generations, just as that projects were there, as I was growing up, it will change generation living for people. And the trajectory of people's lives are changed because of this. And it's a different approach to affordable housing. And there's a lot of nuance behind the background, how this was put together too, it it that Thomas and his group have have blazed a trail, to say, for affordable housing, that I'm sure will be duplicated in many other communities, should be reproduced in other communities throughout our country, throughout our state. And now we can be that example of how, to see what could happen in a community. But anyway, they they definitely need to be commended for all the work that they did.
And so to dovetail on that, many of y'all have had discussions, Jamie and Sean both serve on the planning commission. I've asked, and council members have asked, Kurt had talked about this yesterday, we've asked the team to come to us in June, Craig, does that sound right? So we're going to have a discussion over our downtown core overlay and some of the rules and things that we have. But really to look at pictures of what's been built over the last fourteen to eighteen months, let that show the council of what, you know, may be good things, maybe what, some things that may, we we may need improvement. But, you know, we really don't know how things can improve until we start seeing how they're being used. And so the goal is that we can, we can let our planning department, our planners know, hey, for example, you know, I think our core overlay, downtown core overlay frowns on front entry garages. Let's look at pictures of what's being developed and say, hey, as a council, you know, we don't have a problem with front entry garages. But to really look at what we've approved on paper, and then what's being built, and see if we're okay with the direction we're going. And that way, we can maybe make it easier for properties downtown to redevelop and, you know, continue to start that rising tide as we as we see the development. And Murfreesboro Housing, in my opinion, has set the standard for what's going to be, what's going to happen downtown.
Affordable, and I won't take much time for this, but it's affordable housing doesn't have an answer. There's not a silver bullet that's going to be the answer. It, you know, I noticed today that folks from Habitat were out there supporting this effort. You know, they they have a different model that they're using. But we need to have innovative people, developers and private industry and and private developers, but also the public discovering different ways to address this affordable housing issue in our community. And I'm just glad to see that we're we're moving, we're not sitting on our hands and throwing up our hands, but we're trying to find answers. And this is certainly a good example of how, when people work together, something can happen.
Well, what we continually hear is that, you know, when these auctions happen downtown, that you've got one group that's bidding to be able to tear down and build something affordable and new. And then you've got another group that's wanting to buy and perpetuate what is already there and not put any improvement. And so I think what we want to be, we don't want to be a hindrance. You know, Reagan, and I think it was in the eighties, I love the quote where Reagan said, I'm the government and I'm here to help, that we want to literally be there to help and find. But it's not, we're not providing to be a hindrance for redevelopment downtown, so.
My dream is to see the city buy some property or use some of our property and build another community of affordable housing. Because there are waiting lists, I spoke today at the Health Department to a group on aging, and that was a concern of theirs, that they wanted to see more affordable housing. So, you know, maybe as a city, I'd love to see us build a community with affordable housing. But I I feel that's down the road.
The good thing is, we just did it today.
Right.
Right? So, I mean, and we've got Mercury that's going through the process, Mercury Boulevard, or I shouldn't say Mercury.
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King Boulevard. So, I mean, we've got the opportunity that's out there.
There's so many people on waiting list, too.
Yeah. I'm supposed to tell everyone, we did, we filmed last week the state of the city, and we've been doing that a little differently, where we do that more as an interview and let the city TV goes through and really talks about every department. So we have talked about solid waste, we've talked about new buildings for Murfreesboro Water and Sewer. So that is going to debut next Tuesday, April twenty-third, at seven PM. But it also is going to be on all the social media media channels and the YouTube channel. So that is a pretty informative thing to show what everyone on this council has been working on throughout the city. So that'd be something if everyone wants to watch, it'll be a good, it'll put you to sleep pretty quick from listening to me talk. But there's a lot of our department heads that have put a lot of work to show what they're proud of and doing. So it's something that's really exciting for our city. All right, we won't meet next week, but we'll see everyone, May the second. And for everyone, council members, because I know we had this discussion last week, but it was not televised, the city manager position posted on Mon, or Tuesday, and that will be open until, after talking to Randolph, Randolph said that typically on internal listings inside the city, those only stay open for seven days or for a week. So that will close sometime first of next week. We'll see who's applied, and then from there, we'll, we will start the process of going through our interviews as a council, the executive or the the executive team, their their interviews. And then we will have a schedule that we start going through on that selection process. So that will all be happening very quickly over the next three to four weeks. Kelly, we are glad that you fit in for, or subbed in for Adam tonight. Kelly, recently, it was announced last night, Adam emailed all of us that that Kelly is our deputy.
Chief Deputy.
Chief Deputy.
City Attorney. So Kelly, congratulations. I know, Kelly, you've been here for quite some time, so we're proud for you and proud for what you do for the city.
Thank you.
All right, leaving that, we will stand adjourned.